Where.
The right of way?
It states something to the effect that when you sell the property, the right of way goes away.
Really?
Oh, it has to say after all your for this special word because we have a way.
Which yeah, which I've never seen that before because right of ways go with the property, not with an owner. It's not like Luther gets a right of way on your property and no one else does.
I thought the panel who granted it, our attorney told us was who granted it.
Which usually.
Like one of our neighbors gave us a right of way to cut through their property.
Right, now we.
And it says it's to confer as long as stipends all that.
Right, it should go on forever and it just stays with the property regardless if you own it, the other person still owns it or whatever.
Yeah.
It's very, very rare that it says it only goes with Luther, no one else.
And that that. That's not like a hundred year old be that something.
Right, so um and I don't know.
All your notes were on the previous set of plan from the last uh.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that presses the meeting, I don't think there's.
Also.
Because I'm not an attorney and that's where the terms. Stop.
Do you have any book for this? I can't, I can't find this.
I can't find what.
This on the the general notes. And this is incorrect English, but if it's the way it is, it's important, so we have to go with it, so I need to.
Oh.
It's a dumb maybe the. Hi.
How are you doing, Cindy?
I'm in a quick bit and turn back, I turned there watching the.
Yeah. It's hot. That's good, I need it.
Yeah, I I still don't see what I got, well, this is.
It's a cherry.
Right. Uh from what I could see.
I wish I had the drawing.
In fact, the turf farm runs that right.
I understand today.
When I click on down mark.
He fits with his.
Three oh three of two.
Oh yeah, so I think since I have under.
How many ten was it?
It's like thirty two. Yeah, I have a in the truck, whatever, uh they weren't good, they weren't good for that.
No, no good shot shouldn't require a township name.
Brother shot. And then we'll deal with.
So essentially.
What we'll deal with him, I still have a big deal, I need like a agreement together. By.
I I do that.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just read as a double negative, so I'm.
Yeah. She's on time.
Oh, right.
I was gonna say now.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, I sure, yeah, so we'll set it to mine and then if that was not.
Right, and I do see, I did something about it.
No, sorry. Yeah.
Um and he sent it to Wendy.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
It should have been probably sent to the supervisor's garage.
Oh. Well, it would go like, yeah, and we should make them uh, I have, and we should make a motion.
Yeah.
Um. Oh, it's the extension.
This is why I already remember here.
Mm?
I already remember.
Right, bro. Uh.
Those ones too.
Bro, they were, they don't look.
Ouch, so but I don't buy another that I have.
We. Uh especially.
To tell him what we.
To be considered a wet.
Do you mean they're swinging right here?
They all enter our suite.
Uh.
And I'm saying uh hydro.
Oh, well. Oh, well.
Uh standing water.
Do you think that would be around?
They have a hydro.
And yeah, hydro soil, standing water and uh full hydro plants, you know, cattails or whatever's out there. Um they're not doing any proposals in hydro soil.
Right.
Uh and you look at an overhead map and you see it's just nothing but grass, everything's like no.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, and yeah, that's why even in my letter I said you should just ask for a waiver, I won't object to it. That doesn't mean you will give them a waiver or recommend it or even abort. I just want to object because I can't imagine there there's no way that's where they want to actually construct their buildings.
Can you look at two seven five point three oh three?
Wh- which one?
Um.
I mean, that's a whole tire.
Oh, right.
But that's also.
Two seven five three oh three number thirty four.
Thirty four, okay, yes. No plaque, ours access to highway under.
Okay, you can.
Any notice unless the plaque tells us further away from that, after the house like that behind.
Is that done?
Yeah, because it's sort of a double thing we do.
Because what? Now.
I mean, part of the notes that can access.
From the land that we already have, but so that actually goes like back, arling.
Correct.
Type of that. That they don't, they don't have any to that, for they don't have anything from.
No, that's active, yeah, yeah.
But when I went to tax map, it showed that whole parcel.
Yeah.
And actual road like that, that's like.
Yeah.
It's like they order arling, there's two rooms in the house.
Yeah.
It's just them. Yeah. Um it's just that and then back arling in the house. Some evidence of it is. See that at the waiting.
That's what I thought, yeah.
No, it's been, uh been, been.
Yeah, there it is, it's just under the generic.
Not number?
Um it'll, it's a note on their claim, it's the.
Don't just read it.
Where it says they have to get all permits.
Don't just read it.
Oh, number nineteen, number nineteen.
Okay, that's one, I can't, it don't pick it up, okay.
Yeah.
That should.
Okay. Um, but basically they can't do nothing until you get all their permits, which.
Gotcha. Which they're not, okay, claim on that there, there's nothing that. No.
And uh.
Can I get off?
That would mean.
We should worry about.
Or. Was that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm calling meeting to order him at seven thirty four. Um Robert called, please.
Yes, Judy Hogan, I'm here, Rich Lucat, Barbara Bird, Luther Ridge.
Sure. Yeah. Rita.
Dominic Carrelli, Horst Steamer, and Braden Love.
All right, thanks for. Okay, does anyone have a chance to look at the minutes from the menu?
Are there any edits? I did not receive any.
I don't think I would have any.
Okay. I just have under Old Business, present or Michael, we have Apex and property on on.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
Can't hear?
Uh yeah, sorry.
I can't speak.
Oh, sorry, but Old Business, Apex, you said?
Uh-huh. No, under present.
Oh, yes, got it, got it.
Okay, and I'm not sure, I guess we're gonna ask, I want to start, are you the owner or is Goldenwood the owner of the property?
Golden, Goldenwood Track Road LLC.
Okay.
Okay, so you are.
I'm, I'm just a representative.
Property representative?
Yeah, I'm the project manager.
Okay, project manager.
What's the full name of Goldenwood's?
Say that again.
What's the rest of the Goldenwood's?
Uh Goldenwood Track Road LLC.
Thank you, so Goldenwood Track Road LLC, pro- project, okay.
Oh, sorry, it's actually Track Road LLC is the owner, I'm sorry. Goldenwood Track Road.
Just Track Road, not Goldenwood?
Track Road LLC, Goldenwood is a business owner, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so um is there a motion to exonerate this?
I'm.
The editorial changes.
I've changed.
Okay.
Second.
Blue fifth second, on paper, fine, no discussion.
Uh.
Okay, um. I received yesterday, and it was so small on my phone, I couldn't read it, I couldn't get it open on my computer, but something from one of the um claiming commission members in Freedom Township. The comprehensive plan is due to be reviewed in twenty twenty five.
For what do?
Our comprehensive plan.
Oh, for Adams County?
That's.
What?
For Adams County?
That's for how.
No, for Southwest Region of whatever.
Yeah, it's Liberty, Freedom, what?
It's Liberty, um Freedom, Carol Valley, Fearful, Bullock, Barrow, Heine, and Houghton Bay. So they have asked if we could have a representative to meet with committee that's trying to put together to um to do or reorganize, or at least to review this to see if any changes need to be made.
Is this for next year?
Twenty twenty five.
Does that have to go to the supervisor?
No.
Is what, I expect your supervisor.
But if there's no one from here, we can just say there's no one from here and we're gonna have to find us. I'm sorry.
Recorded.
It seems like.
I can't do anything on it right now.
Something we ought to have something we ought to have representation on, right?
What?
It seems like something we ought to have representation on, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any help for how we work at it or you've never done it, but?
I have. No. Um.
Hey, if it's just for you, I would say county wrote your zone, your comp plan, I'm gonna assume they're gonna be lead on it. They'll probably have a meeting once a month for a couple hours, just like any hour meeting.
Right.
I guess it depends on what they wanna do. Um it's a comp plan, it can take upwards, into writing a new comp plan, it can take upwards of two years. Um to review it after ten years and this area hasn't changed, don't see a thing much, I'm not, I'm, I'm, it's probably still gonna be a year of your time. Um I would say whoever at county jumps in and is the lead, whether it's Merkel or Rob, I'm sure they already are gonna know what they want to talk about and say, hey, the history's still good, the roads are still the same, we had a little bit of growth here, what were we gonna expect, we're gonna change some maps. Do you guys have anything you want to change? Um, you know, a mere what, six minutes palates, it's hard to get six minutes palates to agree on anything, especially when you have five supervisors in each one, you know?
We're all different.
Uh, right, uh.
I mean, I do, I think I could do that.
Okay, thanks for your job.
Assuming the meetings are a reasonable time.
Right, well, I mean, if the county's leading, they'll probably be doing office.
Uh, I don't know, they might have some vote.
No? Right.
Uh I think it depends on the representatives, the representatives, say you prefer things at night, they'll do them at night, if.
Hopefully this, this third tweet's had a month of meeting.
There you go, no. Okay, thanks.
That's probably the first meeting, let's figure out what meetings.
Okay, I don't see anyone here public comments.
This is, I mean, clearly see a venture, I mean.
Um. So we're on Old Business, and you have to do your comments on the plan. Most recent date submission was June tenth, June twenty four.
Do you all have like June fourteenth letter?
Summer.
What?
Yeah.
My latest letter was June fourteenth.
Yeah.
Do you have?
When, when you sent that out, like.
Yeah, she said how like.
She was leaving a packet, not what happens, it's not in my files, so no one can do anything.
Yeah, it happens.
I, I can.
Yes, it's fourteen.
It was sent, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was sent yesterday.
I did get that, I thought this came from you. Oh, it's from, it's from Brandon O'Neal. I thought you landed a command from that.
Oh, no, 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 I wanna make sure you had my most up-to-date letter.
Yes. Yes, I have.
Um, 'cause my office and mine's office had a lot of communication in the past two, three weeks to get it to the point where, and we'll go over it, we feel if you grant it conditional approval, that we have a plan. Um they are asking for a waiver of delineating wetlands, have a wetland delineation done, uh we would not object to that. Um I think we're down with some of this household items, at least on my end, which is sign and seal the plans, uh the wetland delineation, they have to do an O and M agreement for the stormwater, they have to bond it, so we need their bonding estimate. Uh they'll need an as-built plan when it's done, and then we get to the sticky wicket of this joint use driveway, or share driveway, or whatever you just wanna call it.
Sure.
Um. Basically, we're okay with the design of it, where it's located, et cetera. You have to get an operation and maintenance agreement with your neighbor.
Sure.
If you, uh, the deed they just showed us, appreciated of all, it's, it's a weird deed, never saw nothing like that before, where it said the right of way goes with the owner, and once he sells it, the right of way goes away.
I think that, there's two lane, I think that might be our part of the lane, so it doesn't.
To me, that's a lawyer thing, yeah.
Yeah, this, you're right.
Okay, um but I know we're gonna stand fast on the operation and make sure, 'cause then that, regardless of how these deeds are written, uh that says you and the neighbor agreed.
Oh, sure.
This is it, you know, so we have no issue, again, location, the, the, the way you put it, the managing the stormwater, all that's good. Um if you can't get that O and M, then basically if you want your plan to go be recorded, that driveway will have to just go away.
Yep. We had a conversation, I think. Yeah, it actually looks like it's a, the guy has a turf farm back there. If you look, look at the tax map, yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just got his, I just got his spilling over like a day ago, so I'll try to get ahold of him here tomorrow morning, so. I don't think it should be a problem.
Um then we don't have the latest zoning officer comments, I, looking at the, the latest ones that we did have, which is what, March? And I just had them, I put them away, I don't know, but I think you did, uh.
Yeah. You, you did the outside conversation with Andrew.
Yeah, I mean, to go back to their letter, um had to do a development option, we, you did that, the setbacks, I mean, that was a comment I had, you added the, we had cultural nuisance, the handicap parking spot, we got through that, um the, the office calculation for parking, we got through that, you added the adjusted track approach, um. And then you show that the buildings are two hundred feet from lot line, so I mean, I'm at the end, the pasture area is twenty five feet, so I'm at the zoning officer, all I can say is from our letter of March point seven, it appears.
I, I have more recent, but I just couldn't find it.
It's.
Um I don't think we have any public comments, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I think that the same one you did with LMA and object, when you done like about the, the joint thing.
The drive.
The talking Andrew, we dealt a lot, we took care of a lot of those, but he said the same thing with when I mentioned you, you know, definitely get some treatment with famine and he'd be okay with everything, that's what he insisted on exactly.
No, I, I think that's really the, with this plan, I think that's your biggest sticky wicket at this point, whether you go forward, get agreements, find or say, we're gonna, we're just gonna move forward or.
So if we get that within the next two weeks before the.
Well.
It's not for the supervisors.
I was gonna say, when's the supervisors, so.
July second.
In July, yeah, so if they recommend approval, then it's gonna be on their agenda.
July second.
Yeah, okay.
Um chances are, they're gonna say the same thing, like, we recommend approval, show us everything, so you don't necessarily have to get that agreement in two weeks.
I don't think, I don't think it would be a problem.
Um but at least something.
Yeah.
Because plus, if, if you have to take the, the driveway off,
Mm-hmm.
that might be deemed a major change where it has to come back to here.
Uh, I agree on that, correct.
Okay, it may not be, I mean, it's an interpretation, but I'm just telling you, worst case scenario,
I'm sure.
it might be deemed a major change where it comes back to here for them to say, yeah, we approve it now without the driveway, or the second driveway is what really is, so you already had one that sets building.
Sure. Yep.
Um.
Okay.
So it, it's basically your time and we can want to.
No. It's our intention to get it. Yeah. It's our intention to get it, yeah.
I just had a question on the um handicap parking spaces. Is it already to just show them marked as handicap, no, it's the correct size, on lease, does it have to have a building?
It is the correct size.
It is.
Yeah, I, I, it's not.
It sure does.
I know, because they're showing the stormwater stuff on top of it, make it a little, but if you actually measure it out, it's twenty by sixteen. What it is is twenty by eight plus the, what do they call that, the van access or something, yeah, and then mover and ramp, which is also twenty by eight,
Yeah.
so the total is twenty by sixteen.
Correct.
But they show it as twenty by eight and twenty by eight.
Oh, okay.
And it just looks a little.
That's just the wheelchair system in one.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, with everything involved there together, it's a little confusing.
If they were to.
It's twenty by sixteen.
If you, if, you don't have to, um and if you would have put a hot tail on the plan, you should, and it would have been easier for everybody.
That's not a problem, I prefer that one.
Um there was a typo that actually was very significant that Judy picked up on, um that's the no, number nineteen.
And I don't think it would be a bar, see, I didn't know, but it's on the general notes, number nineteen.
I know. You added the word not after the word shall, and so you ended up with a double negative, which the note's supposed to say you cannot build until you get permits, but since you said add it to double negative, it actually says you could build before you get permits, sweet.
Okay, it says.
Yeah.
All right.
Nothing.
It's kind of.
That, that was on purpose.
You asked, well, you did ask that question as you could start, so you don't think, you know?
You're talking about.
Um.
Yeah, so it starts off, no construction required, da-da-da, but then it should just say shall begin until, but it says shall not begin.
I was looking at it wondering what she was talking about until she said double negative, I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, that's fine, I don't think that would be a good start, but yeah, I will, I'll change that.
I don't know if anybody else has any comments on it, one thing I, everybody should know, um I told you to do non-building declaration, I'll deal with that side.
Oh.
Why? Because it's not needed, because you didn't increase any water flows.
Right.
Um. So basically, you know, you, you, you just don't need it, that's all, so there's no, we're not gonna approve it, we're not, there's nothing, it's gonna happen, it's not gonna hold up the plan.
Okay.
Um. Honestly, I'm not sure if I agree with you.
Well, at least you.
Why? No, I have it right here, and it doesn't, I, I don't have, he goes, we went through all that.
Declarations.
Yeah. He goes, we went through all that to get all the notes on to go, well, they're not, there's no trace of water usage.
Even though they've got more dogs and they'll be clean.
It's, it's more along the lines of workers.
Oh. And just to be clear, on page three, says.
Page, I'm sorry, three, is that?
You have the site, the site plan is called Seagull and.
Yeah, 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 I put, I put on, we got a, a site book.
That's a problem.
Oh, I gotta do it, I don't think I'm gonna.
No, you won't do it either.
Um. Retired nurses and teachers get me all the time, I'm gonna take a person.
I don't.
First word, he goes, I'm.
Nurse.
Yeah.
Um and then I just, I asked Ron it before he came in because, um excuse me, uh ordinance two seventy five point three oh three number thirty four says that the flat contains applicable notice of use of a state road, which a track road is, but he said that thinks that you're covered under nineteen under the general.
Yeah.
Just as long as you know we've got to do something with the state for state road.
Just verifying, I mean, all you really have to do is verify uh that your current HOP is acceptable, which is, I can't see how it won't be, it's a, you don't have to change any use, you know?
Right.
I get it, a few more trips will occur on a daily basis on average, but I'm not a traffic engineer, I doubt it'll be enough to.
Right, not on either.
Do our thing.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks for.
Rich?
What?
Any, any questions or thoughts, man? Bar?
It's funny, I wasn't looking.
We just got the line something up to me that I was. I have a, a friend whose husband's in hospice and she's calling me some nursing question, she's in Texas.
Uh-huh.
Uh do you have any questions upons?
No, no.
Okay, so, um.
I would suggest you take the waiver first and then go to the plan.
Okay. Okay. So on June tenth, um Michael Rans submitted to Wendy a let me say this, okay, so it's, it's basically restates Dominic's comment, is, in his, in his report, is that there are no improvements proposed in the hy- hydro soil, which would require wetlands, um delineation, so they are requiring a waiver of this requirement, and since Dominic has already stated in his report to us that he has, it says a wetland delineation report is required, but you've submitted the, whatever no improvements proposed in hydro soil, hydro soil, so if he can, it's fine. And if we approve this waiver. We'll just one last speaker.
So you on motion, yet we recommend approval for the waiver.
Correct, because we don't approve it, we're recommending the waiver for it after.
Or. So I'm moved that the board recommend approval of the waiver for, what's that? What the?
Waiver, waiver, wetland delineation.
Waiver request, Rock fifteen two seventy five three oh three point eight point three two point six.
Oh, and you're going for the.
Our second.
Okay, any discussion? Anyone in favor?
Uh, uh one quick second now, the last note on your plan that talks about the waiver.
Yes, sir.
Since it will most likely be approved July second, you wanna add in here this waiver, you wanna add the actual thing, you say
Oh, yeah.
the waiver request is granted on.
I did it on.
I think you can, if you say, you can probably put it on July second.
July second.
Because that's the next board meeting, um.
We'll do it.
You just gotta remember.
Sure, okay, thanks for, yep, we did.
Yes, and I did it when I launched.
Okay.
Okay, so now one of the conditions.
Unless you, I, I would say meet KPIs letter, plus fix the uh couple ty- typos that were pointed out, and you could probably be okay with that.
And do we need to include with the um zoning officer agreement?
The, in any outstanding zoning officer comments, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will um move that we recommend conditional approval with, um after the comments on KPIs, most recent submission, which was
True.
June fourteen, are that, that a few titles are corrected.
In any outstanding zoning officer comments.
And, um, just thinking. Yeah. Any other outstanding.
Any outstanding offensive comments?
On this. Um, all right. It's our address, I passed it.
Right.
Is that your formal motion?
It is.
I'll check.
Any discussion? The cross sentence, okay, all in favor?
Right. We're gonna drag it out of my mind.
I don't know, this is four times it did here, right?
No, that's, yeah.
Please. Now, please be aware, my office doesn't typically come to supervisors' meetings.
Yeah.
Um, they, unless they really need here, you know, you know, to handle everything sort of here. So, um, yeah, I won't be there to, you'll have to let them know what's sort of, I mean, they'll know what's going on. It's not being taped, but I ju, I just won't be there to.
Sure. No, I appreciate it, absolutely.
'Cause I'll make a report to them. I'll report that we did recommend.
Okay. Okay. Well, actually, I appreciate it.
Okay, well, nice meeting you.
Well, yes, you, you all have.
Sorry, we got dragged out of the.
Or.
Well, now you know about Pennsylvania, so how this.
And be honest with you, I would love to have more projects up here.
Oh, yeah?
From where, yeah, from where, uh, yes.
I mean, we've got, what have we got, two thousand four hundred seventy-one township, it's, it's something like, it's way over two thousand.
Yeah.
And each one has their own ordinances.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, it's just insane. I come from a county decker.
It's, it's the process, it's, I mean, everyone's been wonderful dealing with her, everyone.
Yeah.
It's the process how you deal, where you can interact as, you know, a professional with somebody and not have to do like we do in Washington County, in Maryland, there's a portal. So what's crazy about it is, we can't, once you submit a project, they all review it, all twelve agencies. But we can't see any comments until all of them review it. One may take it dead, which I can be working on to get approved, and the next one may take three months. And then they all submit them in one time.
Oh.
And that's one project. We have to then do all of them at one time, and I can't reach them though, until they're all completed. So the month, it drags on forever.
Yeah.
It, it forever.
Yeah.
So I must say, you, it may seem like a long time, you, three months, it's, it's been refreshing to me. So you all been great, Matt. So it's, I'm gonna drive.
Wait, wait, you need an MDS permit?
Well, I, I'll, we'll keep it under any. So.
Um, I have a question. The two hundred and some acre of track up here, owned by some development corporation?
No, it's more than two acre.
Three and seven maybe.
Yeah.
So what, was that, that was purchased for a, like a development?
It, it was purchased for development, maybe at least ten, twenty years ago.
Now, it's been twenty plus years, yeah.
It's nice, it's been, my god, I've been here too long, this.
So they, they bought that before they tried any approvals or, or to get any approval, or anything?
I'm not going through it.
I, I.
So you wanna talk outside?
I found it on Google search.
I was gonna say, go read the news.
It's a long, long, it was very interesting.
That is. Yeah, and that was agreements, that, that started, I think, prior to this township being managed, only?
No, we had someone, but they updated it after.
We updated it because of this.
Yeah, okay. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it coming.
I mean, that was, that was, that was lawsuits from the township from, what, what were you called? Friends of Liberty?
Many. Save our Liberty.
Save Our Liberty, I mean, it was, I literally walked in here a month out of college and got thrown into that.
No way!
No, that's what I know. And I'm, it's, and here we are, twenty plus years later, I'm still going, I have no idea what's going on.
Welcome to.
Well.
So, yeah, that is a.
Retraced.
We, we don't know what's gonna ever happen with that.
Yeah.
It's right, there's a new plan coming in.
I mean, but there are.
Yeah.
There are agreements and everything, and that, like I said, on reports, um.
It hasn't gone well. They tried to sell the apartment.
Oh, I thought they did sell it. What's going on?
Right, he said it's one old kind of guy.
It is one, yeah, that's, that's weird, I don't know if they sold it.
Why? Where'd you go to college?
Uh, I'm not, remember, I'm not an engineer, but my undergrad was Bloomsburg, and then I went to Temple for my master's degree.
Nice.
Um, yeah, it wasn't bad.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Maybe we'll have an open house.
Oh, you will be invited, for sure.
Appreciate it.
Yep. All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, thanks.
Which one did you get that number, like, blah, blah, blah?
Uh, it was on me.
Do you know, do you know Bart, Paul? Paul, his, on KPI, over there. He was on the planning commission there, and they took Bart.
Oh, I thought you said Barr, I'm sorry.
He's, yeah, and he got all because, um, oh, it was just a huge thing, and they tried to make the people something to do. And, um, I had it open later, and I was working him, and he started asking questions. And he said, based on my, like, twenty-seven years in USA, this is what we do, we go to head of the line. You know, take things on yourself. And I wanted to determine, this is what I did. And I said, thank you, you're just, but you know, we had to pay core expenses.
Right.
At a layer.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, it was bad.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are a couple of other things. One is the DOD C rating mark, and then one heard background, so that's on hold. The only new business is a request for additional time to review the Hamilton Bay and Liberty Township, Jesus, Mary, Joseph, LDP twenty-five, C one five dash zero, eight five, dash zero, two. They have this time requested, not forty-five days, but a hundred and fifty days. The request was submitted on May twenty-eighth, twenty-four, and was accepted by the board supervisors on six fourteen four. So they just wanted us to know that. They went ahead and accepted that.
Who accepted that?
The board supervisor.
Oh, so you already approved this?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine. So there is no further the business on the agenda, so I will refer.
It, it's a.
So, so the, the supervisors have.
I mean, they, they did the thing with the extension, but I th, um, I think that's the latter.
Yeah.
They're, they're telling us that they're granting
Yep.
the extension.
Yep.
To ask people.
Yep. No, they have to grant.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's, it seems odd, I know exactly where you're going with that. So what it is, is, um, the way the law is written, we have ninety days township to make a decision. Um, the township cannot try to stone wall someone and go, eh, we're gonna extend you, we're gonna extend you, eh. You missed out this word. Oh, people that, like, can drag this on. So the way legally they have to do it is, they come in, they say, we need an extension, and we give you per, the right to grant us the extension. So, yes, it's, it's worded like that, and that's the reason why.
Yeah. Okay.
Um.
And if we don't do something, the dead goes as soon as we.
Right, if you don't make a ruling before the time expires, it's automatically approved. Um, and again, no one wants that to happen, I mean, maybe some people will, but no one really wants that to happen. So then you have to start all over from the beginning, pay all the fees, and really start from the beginning. Um, and if you think it's never gonna happen, then, you know, township will just deny the plan, that they'll, you know. You know, if you say, hey, you're missing these ten comments, you have a week, and they say, well, we're not asking for an extension, okay, we deny the plan based on these ten comments, sorry. You know, that's why most won't see.
Yeah, I, I just thought of it, and I would.
It's, it's, I, I, I did the same thing. First time I read them, I said, wait, this isn't right, you know, like, no. I had, I think it was Wally Davidson explain it to me, that this, I have to write it, blah, 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 this, no.
So this is just information that's already done, we don't need an motion or anything?
Correct.
It's my understanding.
Should I write anything about the rules on the business?
Uh.
Just like the KPI agenda, maybe?
I mean, we just.
Look, they acknowledged that they approved it.
Yeah.
I have to say, we acknowledge.
Okay, all right.
Just like it says it on here.
That's all I, yeah.
Knowledge request.
Okay. It's after.
It's a little early. Well. This is my re, I'm a reiter.
We can all hear. At eight oh five.
This is my second note meeting this week, like, two years.
Two. And it's, I'm too still.
I know, talk about, uh, sometimes that's just the way it falls, they can't.
Oh, so they're not always all on the same page?